Good evening, welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Sommersville City Council on this twelfth day of May twenty twenty-five. Like to welcome all of our guests and move right into tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the council minutes for the meeting we held on April twenty-eighth twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve and waive the reading.
Second, okay, council, we got a first and a second. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes as they were presented in your packet? Down the left, no, down the right, no. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Public comment, no public comment tonight. Counsel, what we're gonna do is we're gonna table the audit, the fiscal year audit. David Howe could not be here this evening, so we'll get him rescheduled and he'll come the first meeting in June. Aaron, if you'll work on that, make sure we're good to go. Okay, moving right along, the next, the next item on the agenda is the twenty-five, twenty-six Somersville City Council Grant Awards. Before we start the dialogue on that, I'd like to make a couple of announcements. One is that, let's see, I just had that email, what did I do with this? Here it is. Counsel, as you hopefully all received an email that I intend to increase the budget amount for city council grants, fifteen thousand dollars. And I would like to just let you know where those funds are coming from. To our surprise, we received from the state attorney general as part of the Pfizer and Ranbaxy lawsuit. The city of Somersville as a part of that lawsuit was awarded fifteen thousand dollars. And the way that worked, it wasn't in the protocol of the other opioid funds, so they were considered general funds to the city budget, per the state auditor of whom we received this information from. So we will do a budget amendment for the next fiscal year. Once we get in that fiscal year and add fifteen thousand dollars to council grants. And then we'll just have to look at the numbers and stuff. There may be a couple that will have to say you're awarded, but if it's not a problem, we may have to be delayed a little bit to issue the checks until we get the funds in the, in the, in the budget that allows us to pay those funds. We'll just see how that works to make sure that we're not expending funds that are allocated in the budget. Cause that would be a gig on behalf of the state, the state auditor. So that's where the funding's coming from. It's the, the funds that we received from the state attorney general's office as a result of a lawsuit settlement that was not a part of the opioid settlement. And then the other thing I wanted you to know, counsel, that I did go back and analyze and we will be giving, we will be awarding the Nicholas County Health Department grant at fifty-three hundred and the Nicholas Coalition at ten thousand. And we'll do that out of our opioid funds. So those are being removed from this platform tonight as you give up now what is sixty-five thousand dollars for council grants. So with that said, we'll go as tradition calls, we'll just start down and, and we'll take numbers and Aaron's over there working the magic pen and we'll see what we can do to get to that total. Backpacks for veterans, they requested four thousand.
I gave three thousand twenty-five hundred.
I gave three.
I was a three.
Okay, three, sounds like the consensus is three thousand, we'll start with that number. Okay. Bread of Life Food Pantry, five thousand.
I gave four thousand four.
Four.
I was thinking three for all of those kind of things.
Okay, we got four, two fours and a three, we need to hear some more voices.
Yeah, I was thinking around three.
Three, two threes, two fours. For like an auctioneer, that's, that's three fours.
What about?
What's that?
Stevie had a five.
Stevie, oh, Stevie had a five, sorry Stevie.
Sorry.
Three, okay, three thousand is the number. Bread of Life Food Pantry, three thousand, at least for this first run. Okay, Friends Are Fun Child Development, seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Five.
Five, five?
Thirty-five hundred.
Five, so it sounds like five is a number. Okay, five thousand. Okay, and then the next one is Levasse People Place, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars.
I had twenty-five hundred.
Four. Got a four, got a twenty-five hundred.
What? I had a four.
Got a four.
Yeah.
Four. Looks like the number's four. Okay. Let's see, the next one is Love Works, five thousand.
Two.
I had three.
I had three.
I had three.
Three, two, three, thirty-five hundred, what'd you say Gene?
Thirty-five last year and thirty-five the year before.
Yeah, I was saying thirty-five.
Okay, so are you saying thirty-five Gene? You said thirty-five, that's three thirty-fives, thirty-five's the number?
Four.
Four thirty-fives, thirty-five's the number. Love Works, thirty-five hundred. Okay, the next one is Mountain Lake Equine Association, five grand. Four.
I had four.
I had twenty, I had twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five, two fours.
Three.
Three.
Four would be good.
Four, what does that make, three fours?
Yeah, I was thinking around three, so.
Okay, so we got three fours unless there's. They, they requested five.
That's to make the arena, they're trying to get that arena, they, I mean, for the, it's for the training.
I had three.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got, okay, what, what do you say BJ?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Three?
I had four.
Four?
Four.
Four? Four?
Four.
Okay, it's four, four thousand's the number. Okay, next is New Beginnings Resource, which we took, no wait, no, 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 okay, I got confused. New Beginnings Resource Center requesting ten thousand.
Four.
Five.
I did three for all of these, Love Works and.
Okay, so we got a three, four and a five.
I had five.
Four.
Five, so we got two fives and two fours, there's three fours, it looks like four thousand. Four thousand's what it's gonna be, cause Gene came in at four thousand too. Okay, Nicholas County Community Foundation, five thousand.
Five thousand.
Five.
Okay, five thousand. Okay, Nicholas County Fair, seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
I got five.
I had five.
Five, five? What'd you say Chuck? Five?
Five.
Five, looks like it's five thousand. Okay, Aaron, just real quick, where are we at so far?
Thirty-six, five.
I'm probably two thousand.
Thirty-six, five.
Thirty-six, five, okay, council, we're thirty-six, five, we got the magic number sixty-five hundred. Okay, the Health Department, you can scratch that off, it's been taken care of through the opioid funding. The next one is the Nicholas County Senior Center for forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five.
I had four.
Four, two forty-fives?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, four?
I like forty-five.
All right, forty-five is the number. Okay, the next one is the Nicholas County Shop with the First Responder, twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, that's pretty much a done deal. Okay, Aaron, just kinda tell me when we're getting close to the magic number. Okay, the Intervention Coalition, we, that one has been taken care of, that ten thousand dollar grant will come out of the opioid funding. The next one is Nicholas Old Main Foundation, seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Four.
I had fifty-five.
I had five.
Okay, we got four, fifty-five and five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five? What'd you say Gene?
I had.
Five?
I had five.
Okay, so it looks like five is the number, five thousand's the number.
We're at forty-five.
Okay. All right, next is Soul Mountain Cell, twenty-five hundred?
Fifteen.
I had two.
I had two.
Two, two, two fifteens, two twos, what else, guys, the other guys weigh in please?
Two fifteen.
Two?
Two.
Okay, two's out of, okay, okay, thanks.
See how that.
I feel like an auctioneer. All right, good deal, so two thousand it was, the Somersville Christmas Store, five thousand?
Five thousand.
Christmas Store. Five thousand. Christmas Store and Shop with the Cop is pretty easy ones. Somersville Public Library, twenty-five?
Twenty-five hundred.
I had twenty-five.
I had two.
I had two.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Okay, twenty-five hundred's got it. Okay, where are we at? Aaron?
Fifty-eight thousand.
Fifty-eight, okay. So the, the VFW, five thousand?
Two.
VFW.
Where'd you say they were?
Well, they haven't had anything left.
You have.
What they're, I forget what it was they wanted.
How much, how much do we have left, Aaron?
I know, but what was it?
We got seven grand left?
Museum for their museum money.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was fifty, hell, it's fifty-five.
It's fifty-five. I have fifty hundred dollars down.
Okay.
I did.
We had seven left?
With seven, I recommended three, one, three is what's left.
Well, now on that extension down there's gonna be thirty-three, remember? Cause he was asking five, but he said three, thirty-three when he was speaking. I believe that's correct. I think he said like three.
Three, one, three. That's honestly, three, one, three.
Oh, what's your name out there?
Brian Sparks.
Brian Sparks, yeah, he said.
Hey, council, what I would like to do, I've got a big heart for this veterans museum. And in my budget fiscal year this year, I still have mayor contributions. I would like to on behalf of the city make a five thousand dollar donation out of mayor contributions so we can take this off, I'll do that out of my budget this year and, and then we can move on. Awesome, Aaron.
Thank you.
I think that, and of course, all those donations are made on behalf of the city, on behalf of all of us. But that is gonna be an awesome veterans museum.
Have an idea where it's gonna happen?
Oh yeah, it's, it's already, it's almost all set up, it's, yeah.
It's up there by Dr.
Yeah, it's, you know, Dr. Carson's the building and.
We're melting on the far left end where the melting.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna pay tribute to, you know, local and West Virginia veterans for a lifetime and it's, it's, it's really gonna be a neat deal and what an honor is it, what an honor it is for us to have it in this county.
They've been working hard all the time.
Yes, they have. Okay, so moving right along, Wally Squadron?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand. And then the Nicholas County Extension Service, five thousand?
No, thirty-three hundred, am I?
We have six thousand left, if, you know.
Yeah, yep.
I mean, that was, I mean, that's what he was saying, if you give me five thousand, I'm great, he said, but fifty, he was asking for thirty-three, I mean, that.
Yeah, I had three point five, well, I don't know.
Okay.
I think he did say something about what he really needed was.
Yeah.
Cause, cause he was talking about, you know, like, we requested five, he said, oh, great.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, should we say thirty-five?
Thirty-five, I think it's good, I'm on that.
Okay, thirty-five?
I don't remember.
Okay, what's that leave us, Aaron?
Sixty-two thousand, twenty-five hundred, but.
Twenty-five hundred, so council, you got twenty-five hundred to go back up and look at where you wanna put it. Of course, any place that, that we didn't fully fund?
I, I'd like to go towards Bread of Life. Bread of Life, I mean, not the whole thing, but maybe a portion of it, if anybody else has another one.
I'd say.
Bread of Life, yeah, I'd be fine with another thousand on it, I'll.
The New Beginnings.
I'd like to do someone Love Works.
Yeah. So make Bread of Life four? Maybe take those three and just split it back for the three of them, yeah.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay, so what do we have left, Aaron, twenty-five hundred? Okay, so is there a consensus to take that twenty-five hundred and split it between Bread of Life, Love Works and New Beginnings Resource Center?
Evenly?
Or just round it, I mean, you know, make it.
Well, make it sixty-five thousand leave in a total.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but typically we like to send, send round and check, so you can do it where you don't have to send change.
Okay, can you tell me this?
What's out for the?
Love Works, New Beginnings and Bread of Life. About twenty-five hundred dollars, so.
We can do a thousand for.
Eight hundred, thirty-three dollars.
Thirty-three dollars.
Well.
So we can, you know, just.
It comes up to eight hundred and thirty-three, but don't.
Yeah, round it off for eight thirty-three. Yeah, do.
Yeah, which one do you want the round off to be on?
I'd say give Love Works and Bread of Life, maybe a grand piece, and give New Beginnings another five or something like that. Whatever.
Yeah.
Other thoughts on it?
We'll figure it out, Aaron, I mean, it'll, it, it's eight thirty-three, we'll figure it out to where it's, as even as we can get it without having to send everybody change.
Yeah, that's easy to do.
Yep, okay.
Cool.
Okay, so that totals out to be sixty-five thousand dollars. Okay, good job.
I didn't ask for more money this year.
I surprised you.
Yeah, you did, I saw it even, I'm like, all right, I was gonna ask for more anyway.
For the better of VFW thing, thank you.
Yes, yes. Okay, moving right along, got the grand awards taken care of, reporters report?
No reports.
No report, mayor's report, council, I got several things here. First, council, I would like you all to know that you were invited to a grand reopening at Fabulash this Friday at two P M. And Fabulash is located in the Jessica and Ben Simkin Building. The grand reopening and ribbon cutting is at two P M. And what I would like you to do, if, if you plan on attending, they would like to know who all is attending. And, and they're wanting to prepare as far as where they wanna take the photo on the ribbon cutting, if they can do it inside or outside. If they're gonna have better numbers, they're just gonna do it outside and not worry about trying to get everybody inside. So if you do plan on attending, please let Mary Ann know by the close of business tomorrow.
What's your name this thing?
Fabulash.
Friday?
What is it?
It's a beauty, beauty spa.
Somewhere you need. Huh? Somewhere you need.
It's, so it's, do you know where the Jessica and Ben Simkin Building is at the end of Mossad?
Well, we're.
It's right beside the.
The new, the new nursing home.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Back in there, by the new nursing home.
Okay.
Back to being though.
It's eyelashes.
Yeah, Chuck. My eyelashes are long enough.
Okay, council, the next thing I would like to do is pass you all out a paving list and actually, we're gonna get our paving, we're switching it up this year, we're gonna do our paving. We're gonna do our paving in July. And so I'll pass you out this list so you can see where your award may or may not be affected. Take one, pass it down. Now, what I'm gonna do here for the citizens real quick, is I'm just gonna read down the list of where we're, where we'll pay. Michael Street, six hundred and thirty-two yards. Johnny Joe, five hundred and forty-two. Jackson and Lee Intersection, eight hundred and seventy-one. Cherry Street, seven seventeen, these are all square yards by the way. Dunbar, seven seventy-three square yards. Elizabeth Bright Intersection, nine hundred and fifty-seven square yards. Dominic Circle, thirteen hundred and seventy-three square yards. Scarlet, it's a patch, forty square yards. Ashley Lane, eight hundred and ninety-three square yards. Ready, five hundred square yards. McMillian, six hundred and twenty-two square yards. Vaughn, two hundred and sixty-nine square yards. Center Street, six hundred and eighty-seven square yards. Crest Street, three hundred and fifty-eight square yards. And then also, council, we are, we are preparing and prepping the lot that we own, the empty lot. We're gonna also have the utilities and water set in there as we are reinventing the potato festival for vendors. When we tore the building down, that lot will be paved and it will also be, we're also installing the electrical and the water so that vendors can set up over there like they can over here at Somerset Hall. That project is three hundred and forty square yards. So this is a total spend for paving in July of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, yes sir. Okay, now I'd like to give you some announcements here. The first one is Memorial Day, which is Monday, May twenty-sixth. We will not be having the city council meeting that day. At eleven A M at Veterans Memorial Park is of course the veterans memorial ceremony. That's at eleven A M at the park. And then at one P M is the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the Veterans Freedom Museum.
So that's at one, is that right?
Yeah, one P M, okay? And, and I intended to get the actual address for this, but it is located in the old Carlotta Evans building, which is now Dr. Carson's building. And then, of course, there's that food or vegetable apple stand that's there as well. For people to know on Webster Road, it's in the building there. And then what we'll do is, and Mary Ann, I need you to probably get an address, they, they didn't put an address on this.
Yeah, let me get that and I'll have that.
Yeah, because even I put it on the radio as well and I didn't have an address. Also want everybody to know that on Tuesday, May twentieth, we have another tire collection here in the city of Somersville. This is actually sponsored by the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection. They're accepting passenger and light truck tires off rims. Ten tires per person and they do not accept tires from businesses or heavy truck tires from individuals. Also, in an exciting way, super proud of the, the homeless commission. They have another resource fair, it's actually gonna be on May twentieth from eleven A M to one P M at the Somersville Baptist Church Family Life Center. Always like to brag on this commission, cause it's comprised of all sorts of individuals and organizations. And what a wonderful job they've done, you know, giving a hand, you know, a hand up, not a handout. And, and just so people know, they're gonna provide hot meals, healthcare, haircuts, recovery service, veteran services, hygiene bags, clothing, food bags, laundry supplies, and I'm sure the list is longer than that of the things that you would find. It's all about know someone, tell someone. The really neat thing that the homeless commission's done is they've partnered with M T A. And M T A runs around the county and picks these folks up if they need a ride to get to the resource fair. So the pickup locations is Richwood City Hall, that pickup location is ten A M. Craigsville U-Save, ten thirty A M. Mount Nebo U-Save at ten fifteen A M. Birch River Go Mart at ten thirty A M. And Somersville Merchants Walk Lot at the, in front of the Ford Lots Building at the end there at ten forty-five A M. Want everybody to know that if you get on the M T A to get to the resource fair, you'll get a return ride to the same location you were picked up. Okay, this is another neat deal in our partnership with the Extension Service and the Department of Agriculture here in the great state of West Virginia. The city of Somersville is hosting another forestry forum. And this is gonna be a neat forum because it's gonna be on import-export, some of the stuff going on nationally now that's directly affecting the timber and forest business. It's gonna be May twenty-eighth at ten A M at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. And if you are interested in attending, you need to R S V P to Brian Sparks. And that would be B R Sparks at mail dot W V U dot E D U. If you have any trouble tracking this down, I encourage you to call City Hall and punch Extension one twenty-two, which will take you right to the mayor's executive assistant, Mary Ann. And she'll get you the information you know, you need so you can get registered. And then before we go to council reports, I wanna also remind everybody in a real exciting way, we're getting ready to kick off Music at the Pavilion again this year. Mary Ann and Mike Gregory have done a wonderful job putting this together again this year with a great lineup of entertainment. But Friday, June sixth, from six to eight thirty P M is kickoff and they're gonna kick it off again this year with the, the best way to kick something off and that's Kids Kickoff. So kids are gonna provide the entertainment, plus it's gonna be a night that's got all kinds of activities and there's a big laundry list here for the kids to come out and enjoy. So that's, Friday, June sixth, six to eight thirty P M, Kids Kickoff. Come on out and have a good time and of course, take in some great entertainment that's by none other than our youth. The last thing I would like to say is today, I represented the city of Somersville at none other than Art Yeagle's funeral. You know, Art was an incredible partner to the city of Somersville, the Somersville Fire Department, and then, of course, Nicholas County as a whole. Amazingly, you know, Art had thirty-seven years in the Division of Forestry. And not only that, he's in the West Virginia Hall of Fame for Division of Forestry, which is pretty remarkable. So, you know, I just, it was, it was an honor for me to represent the city at his funeral today. And I just asked that everybody keep his family in their prayers as, as, you know, as life sometimes, we don't know what it's gonna do us. Art left us way too young at the ripe old age of seventies. So, Art Yeagle, a fine, a fine man and, you know, it's funny, you know, I walked up to Gail the day and the first thing she says, boy, Art sure loved giving you a hard time. After we listened to the service today, he loved giving everybody a hard time. So, anyway, remember Art and his family in your prayers. With that said, council reports?
Got a little bit in there.
Okay, good.
Won't take too long.
Okay.
On April twenty-ninth, I spoke about the homeless commission at the Nicholas County Schools Principals Meeting. I talked about the history, the organizations, making up the commission, the two resource fairs that were held, the services provided and the next resource fair to be held, May twentieth that you mentioned. To be effective, the commission really needs input from the various schools in the county regarding the needs of families and children. A flyer was distributed to all the principals with contact information for Mary Ann, Mary Ann Taylor, all wrote this to Mary Ann to communicate student and family needs that members of the homeless commission may help with. So we've asked the principals to, to do an assessment, might be this summer, this fall, whatever they can kinda get to and communicate that to Mary Ann and members of the homeless commission will help out with that. So, we really need that, we've, it's kinda been a missing link in our, in our meetings, it's been brought up every meeting, but we, we haven't had a good opportunity to, to contact the principals, so we've done that now, so.
Good.
Now, also, this is about the soup kitchen. Coming out of the several homeless commission meetings, the Somersville Ministerial Association has decided to sponsor a soup kitchen called The Table, that's what it's gonna be called if you hear that. At the Day Reporting Center on Broad Street, beginning Monday, June second. The table will be open Monday, Wednesday and Friday from four to six P M and will be staffed by volunteer community groups. Please note, if you have a church group, civic group, employee group or other group that would like to participate, there will be a meeting tomorrow evening, that's Tuesday, tomorrow evening at six P M at the Day Reporting Center to provide important information on how this will work and to begin scheduling groups that will be preparing and serving food. So this thing's gonna kick off June second and it's an important meeting tomorrow evening if you're interested.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So, what, what I would like to do, council, is challenge this body that Jim can go to the meeting tomorrow and, and will take a day a month.
We have a day?
We have a day, now, now I also want the city employees to, yes, and the day.
The city employees have a day?
The city employees have a day, I would like for this body to step up and then what we can use for the prep is our conference center. Just like with the city employees.
The prep is gonna actually be, the cooking's gonna be done at the Community Action Building.
But we're allowed, we can, I already talked to them, we can do it at the conference center.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
The city can.
Or maybe Mayor's Hall too, that was mentioned as well.
Yeah.
I'm sure that'll be clarified tomorrow evening.
Okay, so, so what I would like you to do is just bring, if you could, to the next meeting, more information where we can take a day as a city of Somersville governing body, one a month and, and go. Okay, so, so what I would like you to do is just bring, if you could, to the next meeting, more information where we can take a day as a city of Somersville governing body, one a month and, and go, go serve at the, at the table.
Serve at tables, not cook.
Well, we got, we kind of got a benefit, we got a, we got a benefit because they'll cook at the conference center. That's what they're gonna do for the city employees, they're gonna prepare it at the conference center and then the city employees will serve.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So that'll be two for the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Get that on the schedule.
Good deal.
Okay, any other council comments?
Mayor, I just wanna add, Dr. Carson's address is four zero eight nine Webster Road.
Well, if you write that down.
Is that for the museum?
For the, for the building and then of course, museums, whatever.
Yeah, okay, what'd you say it was BJ?
Four zero eight nine Webster Road. Four zero, four zero eight nine Webster Road.
Yeah, I'm not sure, like, sweet number.
Yeah, 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 that would get them there.
I'll get them.
Yeah, I've tried that. Yeah.
Couldn't find it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, council, I have a real quick, we need to go into executive session. Gray, there will not be any motion out of executive session, just for your purposes. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. First and the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh wait, let me back up and state this. It's for, it's, executive session is under the authority of West Virginia Code six dash nine A dash four. And this is for the purpose of discussing legal personnel and deliberative matters. So we got a first and a second, all, did we vote?
No, didn't vote. Eyes at it.
Okay, there we go, aye. Okay, thank you all, thanks Aaron.